Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to be ordered. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Thanks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the questions and tasks. We'll start with public comments. No comment today. Thank you. Okay, and we'll move on to the superintendent's.
Welcome everyone, especially like to welcome numerous candidates for the board election coming up in November. So thank you. See, to learn more about kind of what it takes to be a great board member. What's kind of going on in the district. Also, welcome our friends from Ray and Associates to help us really in order to get after the superintendent search. And so we've got some things happening tonight related to that. Footnote to obviously tonight, Mr. Hoggie will present a little bit of what the great things going on at Mount Vernon Middle School. Just like Steve did last week in the fall, and last week for, or last month for Mount Vernon High School. A footnote to Mr. Brand's presentation. I was watching the news today and yesterday, and I saw the senior report three times. The report was ACT scores are down across the nation. ACT, average ACT score in the United States last year was nineteen point eight, and this year nineteen point six, or the other way around, I don't know. And that's a six-year trend in ACT scores going down. We are literally the polar opposite of that trend. And Mr. Brand reported to you last month that even this past year, we had our highest ACT average since two thousand fifteen, twenty-five point.
Twenty-four point.
Twenty-four eight?
Eight.
Twenty-four point eight. In addition, last week, the new Director of Education, Director Snow, attended the Grandwood ADA superintendent's meeting, just introduced herself to us and listened to us throw hard questions at her. But she handed out some data regarding the ISAS scores in the state, which also last year had trended a little bit downward. And again, I put us as the polar opposite to that because we trended upward. And if you recall, last month, when I talked about those scores, that we kind of use as a baseline, we really want to see every category possible being at least eighty percent proficiency. And if you remember, most of ours were eighty-five percent plus, and there were only two areas that were below that eighty percent proficiency line out of twenty-one different tests. And those were seventy-eight and seventy-nine percent levels of proficiency. Most of the ones that you see for state averages are in the sixties and seventies. So we're doing something right. That's a testimony again to great staff members, great parents who send great kids to us, and just a great community that supports what we do. And you're gonna hear a little bit more from Mr. Hoggie and I about how the middle school fits into that. I will just reflect briefly on what I think is one of the coolest things I've seen in my seven years here, and that was the opening of the Activities Complex on September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Not so much that we have this great new facility, and as a footnote, I'll let you know that we're probably gonna save Cornell here tonight in just a little bit because they're in the middle of a soccer match with Knox College, which is located in Tennessee. They are three minutes away from having an official game. And now the rains and lightning have come in, and you know, if you know guidelines for college athletics, once lightning strikes, you have to wait another thirty minutes. So they're likely not gonna get the game in unless they borrow our field. So likely here in the next hour, things kind of calm down. Cornell's gonna use their field, finish their soccer games, so that Knox College will all the way back to make an official game. So you should have a rumble of thunder, so the earliest they could play is now seven oh five. I don't think it's gonna be very light on your field. Now, I will throw in the joke that I shared with Mr. Tady, because I was gonna do that when I had the football game on Friday the twenty-ninth. I did say they could light up their own field with lasers. So.
You have to be there.
Yep, you have to be there. It's really funny if you were there. I saw as much happiness, energy, pride from community members as I've seen in my seven years. I think a lot of it was just because this latest project was an example of community that's proud of its past while also embracing the future, and it's just a great accomplishment. We didn't get to celebrate the opening of the Performing Arts Center as much as that's as equally important as the Activities Complex because, if you remember, we did do a kind of grand opening celebration on Sunday. And then that Monday, we sold our place out for a choir concert, and four days later, we shut down because of COVID. And we didn't use the, we literally did not use the Performing Arts Center for over a year. So it was just a different energy, and as I said numerous times before, I think now this campus is the new hub for excitement in the, in the community. And so people are gonna find out when they read my newsletter article in a couple of weeks, that now I basically am posing a challenge to the community, and that is the thing. We now have this great campus of everything from the LBC to the Performing Arts Center to the Activities Complex, two to three buildings and all upgrades that we did to those three buildings in the bond issue of two thousand eighteen. I think there's a great opportunity now to think of the possibilities for events and programs that can take place on this campus, whether it's city celebrations in advance, or marching band festivals, or fine arts events, even beyond those that we offer through our regular curriculum, sports tournaments, any type of event that can bring tons of people to the community. I really push the community in the future to dream big and to use what the community has given us to bring even more energy in the community and even a better selling point of why you want to live here and even want your kids to go to school here. Maybe you want your kids to go to school here because our achievement scores show that we are doing something right when overall trends, the scores in standardized testing are, are down. And standardized testing doesn't define us, but is a measurement of our work. So our only, our only limitations are lack of imagination, willpower, and Mount Vernon doesn't lack either of those two things. So I really want to see us push the envelope, and as the fight song says, I'm Mount Vernon. Welcome, and it's great that the farmers didn't get any rain through the growing season, and now we're pouring during the harvest. Lucky, lucky, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Hoggie. Okay, moving on to the action and information items, we'll sit down with the program division at the school, highlighting Mount Vernon Middle School.
Alright, that's me. Okay, so I just wanted to basically tell you guys kind of a lot of what's going on at the middle school. So I'm gonna throw a lot of information at you. If you have any questions at hand, just stop me and I'll answer. So first slide there, please. So total students in the middle school, we have four hundred and fourteen total students. We're grades fifth through eighth. We have, to keep the math simple for me, as we move through the presentation, we'll say we have about a hundred kids per class, right around there. Okay? Next slide, please. So I'm gonna basically walk through each grade level and the classes that are offered. I'll talk about some of our advanced classes, and then we're gonna move into like clubs and activities and things that our students have to do. So fifth grade is pretty straightforward. You have your five core classes. We do have a ELP reading class, and basically what that is, is we have a class for kids who qualify for ELP. They do the reading standards there, and then they do a lot of other things. With reworking Mrs. Maddox's schedule over the last couple of years in our program, this gives her a class grade fail today to meet with those students.
Mr. Educator, use Zachary's, please, explain what ELP is.
Uh, our Extended Learning Program. Tag, it has a lot of different attributes, so talented and gifted, extended learning program. Specials are pretty straightforward in fifth grade. This is my favorite class to schedule because schedules, scheduling is easy. They have basically four slots, four specials. You can choose to take orchestra, and that would just take out general music, but otherwise, as a fifth grader, you get all four schedules. Are all four specials in your schedule, and it's pretty easy. One thing that the fifth grade teachers and musical teachers do throughout the year is our fifth grade musical at the end of, right around spring break. So if you don't have anything going on the week before spring break, head over to the pack. You can see whatever musical they choose this year. I don't quite know which one it is yet, but they'll pick that soon, and it's always, they always do a really good job. The kids get super excited about it, the entire fifth grade's involved in it, and they have a lot of fun. It's always a great show.
Do the kids move between those five core classes?
Yes, they rotate through the five core classes.
So they have five different teachers for them?
Yep, so they have a math teacher, a science teacher, language arts teacher, a reading teacher, a social arts teacher, yep, throughout the day. And that is the same for all four grade levels. Okay, sixth grade. Again, you have the five core classes. We do add an advanced math class in sixth grade. So at the end of fifth grade, you take the end of fifth grade math test. We look at ISAS scores, FAS scores, teacher inputs, and the kids that qualify can get into our advanced math class in sixth grade. What that is, is three years of math in two years. So in sixth grade, you do all of sixth grade math, and you do half of seventh. In seventh grade, you do all of seventh. The rest of seventh, all of eighth, and then you can take algebra as an eighth grader. Then you have your other classes. We continue on with the ELP reading class. Specials get a little bit more interesting in sixth grade. We add in band, choir, band and choir. We do have a lot of kids that will take all three. So they take band, choir, orchestra. And then they have PE. Those are their four specials. And they do that every other day all year long. We have some kids that'll take band and choir. Okay, so then they would lose either art or health. So the more music classes you take, the more of the other specials, unfortunately, you cannot, there's not room in your schedule for. But we do have, as you'll see later on, quite a few kids that do band, choir, and orchestra. Sixth grade goes on two field trips throughout the year. They're both really fun. I've been on both of them multiple times. If you want to crawl around in a cave with a bunch of sixth graders, it is amazing. It's a lot of fun. It's over by Macokota. It's not the Macokota Caves. It's actually on private property, but the DNR has a relationship with the owner, and we get to go in that cave. They just got back from the Mississippi River here not too long ago. They go over there and do a lot of kayaking, canoeing. They all get in a pontoon and go out on the Mississippi. So it's great fun. They fund all of that by doing their pancake supper. So if you want a good meal here coming up, they usually do that in January, you can go to the sixth grade pancake supper. Next slide, please.
It's not unusual, just real quick, to see when you go to high school concerts, kids hit all three concerts. They're in the choir, and then all of a sudden, they're in the orchestra, and then they're in the band.
Yeah, the trend of doing all three musics goes all the way through high school. So seventh grade, again, you've got your five core classes. We continue on with the advanced math. Specials changes yet again in seventh grade. A few years ago, we added in the computer design class. The state passed some new laws about exposing kids to everything from coding to just basically basic computing skills. So to kind of meet that standard, we added in computer design. We do also have a study hall. Now, in seventh grade, your specials go every other day for a semester. So we went from having four spots in sixth grade, now you have eight. So now kids that didn't get art or health as a sixth grader, because they chose two music classes, now they can do art maybe first semester, and then they get health second semester. So it gives us more opportunity to get kids into different classes. Our specialist teachers said that they don't need quite as much time for seventh and eighth graders to finish their art projects, or they can go through units faster in health class. So that gives us more time to get those kids into those classes. Seventh graders do a spaghetti supper. Don't know if that's gonna be on the table this year or not. And then at the end of the year, they always go out to Palisades Park, and they have a nice little picnic there at the end of the year, a cookout with the students, and they kind of hang out there for the day. Eighth grade. Okay, eighth grade, we go to four core classes instead of the five. So language arts is combined, so reading and language arts are combined now into one class. But we still need five sessions or five places throughout the day for the students to divide them up. So we have high school exploratory classes. Those are, right now, it's intro to German, intro to Spanish, computer design, design and modeling, and automation and robotics. The students rotate through four of those five. So every quarter, the eighth grade schedule changes. We've gotta move kids around, move them into a different exploratory class. Sometimes those high school exploratory classes change, depending on, you know, numbers in high school classes and things like that, but we always have that fifth section in with the high school exploratory. Specials stay the same. So it's every other day for a semester. They actually share some special classes with like PE and choir are shared between seventh and eighth grade. The eighth graders will go to Adventureland at the end of the year, or Lost Island. We've gone to both theme parks, and we're kind of weighing the options to see which one we'll go to this year. One thing I did forget to mention, in eighth grade, we also add in advanced science or chemistry. So our eighth graders, at the end of their seventh grade year, they take the ACT placement test for science. And then we look at FAS scores for math, reading, ISAS scores for math and reading, and you get so many points, and then you qualify for our advanced science class. Advanced science is all of eighth grade science in first semester, and then they take the same Chem one class that freshmen, I believe it is, right, Mr. Brand? Freshmen take over here. So those eighth graders are technically entering into high school with half a credit in science.
Is that class in at the high school, or are you guys a teacher?
Mr. Hanson teaches at the middle school.
Oh, does he?
Okay. Okay, so to kind of summarize all of that, what I just said, we have, in our advanced math classes, sixth through eighth grade, we have a hundred and twelve total students. In our advanced science class, right now, we currently have twenty-five students. Reading, five-seven is fifty-one students. And then, don't ask me what it stands for, because I don't remember, but these online classes are classes that our seventh and eighth graders can take from, like our ELP students, students have been identified in our ELP program, can take those online classes, and they get high school credit for that as well. That goes in, I believe, as an elective, right? The Bell and Blank Center classes.
Yeah, technically, it's, you know, if it's an English course, it could, they need four years of English, so they get elective choices if it's required. So, yeah.
So they, they can get credit in high school for those online classes. The nineteen kids that we have in eighth grade ELP, though, some of those are shared in that number of seventeen. So Mrs. Maddox also has a class of students who didn't want to take online classes, and then she has a group of students who did want to take those online classes.
Now, Mr. Hoggie made a quick reference that those classes are through the Bell and Blank Gifted Extended Learning Program at University of Iowa. We have a longstanding relationship with them.
It stands for Iowa Online AP Academy. Questions over like the schedule and stuff, any of those types? Now, we're gonna get more into the activities and clubs and, you know, what our kids are doing besides all the academic stuff. Because we've got some really busy kids.
Now, I'll say one thing real quick regarding the schedule. We're always looking for ways to see if we think we can improve the schedule. We actually have a scheduling committee this year looking at secondary schedules for middle and high schools, if there's any ways to, to improve offerings for kids, the structure of scheduling, that could potentially free up more time for professional learning during the day for teachers and everything. So that's a, that's a group that's gonna meet throughout the year to talk about scheduling challenges and scheduling potential scheduling solutions.
Are there the same number of, of periods at the middle school as the high school? Or are they different?
We have the same, but our teachers will have a team time versus another class. So we have the same amount of teaching periods, but we have that team time, so.
So you can switch kids because it's the same times?
Our eighth grade schedule matches with the high school because we do switch kids, kids, but the other schedules do not match. We have four different schedules in the building. So if we rang a bell, we literally are ringing a bell.
Wow.
If you really wanna understand the middle school schedule, go out and get your PhD first, because you're.
So, yeah, that's a whole nother presentation for a lot longer than the middle. But I would say, a lot of people that have come to Mount Vernon, when I give the tours over the summer, or they come and they, their kids have gone through for a couple of months, they are shocked at how much their kids can do. And we do a lot with our schedule. There's a lot of people that make a lot of sacrifices along the way for our kids to do all of these classes. It's not real easy to get kids into three music classes and PE. Some of our PE classes are fairly good sized because we have fifty-two kids in band, and then all of a sudden, now they need to go to PE the next day. So they're not all fifty-two in PE. We have a class of fifty-two. But there are some big, big classes, so we have teachers, staff members that are making some sacrifices so our kids can do, you know, quite a bit.
Question, Bob. When they are going to more than one or two musics, are they going to the whole music period? Because I thought sometimes they had to go early, early to get to something.
Band and orchestra are on the same day. So the music department has worked out, like on day one, you know, all the orchestra kids go to band. And then the rest of the week, they might go to orchestra instead of band. So some of the kids that take three music classes have to work with the, the music department is phenomenal. They work so well together. They have it all figured out, who goes where and what. They help each other out, they support each other. So again, that's a perfect example of that sacrifice people are making to make it work. We have kids that are in band, orchestra, and choir. So band and choir are opposite. Orchestra and band are on the same day. And that's just in seventh and eighth grade. So, I mean, they, they work very well together, and laws are good too.
Which is kind of hard sometimes for the rest of them, because some leave and, you know, I've heard this one's.
Yes.
If ever, I know there's no easy solution. I'm not saying anything wrong.
To answer your question, yes, they, they do leave early, but again, they've made it work, and I've never really heard of it as an issue because they just, the music department's great, they're good.
The positive side of that coin is, is we are a rare district of our size to have a robust orchestra and, and choir program. That is unusual for a school our size. Not only are they offered their high quality.
Not complaining, just curious.
Yep, but the numbers are the reason why we keep these things going. I mean, it would've been pretty easy to say, hey, we're not gonna have choir or orchestra, but then, you know, I don't wanna tell fifty-eight, seventh and eighth graders, hey, you can't play your instrument anymore. Or twenty-five and eighteen kids. So, next slide, please.
Now, I'll say below number eighteen in sixth grade, remember, that's a small class.
That's, yeah. So we have choir students now. So in sixth grade, we have fifty-two. That's over half the class. So over half of the class in sixth grade is in choir. That's boys and girls, because it's one choir, but over half the class is, you know, is in choir. They do a great job. Our concerts are always amazing. The kids sound, you know, really good, but over half of them are in choir. And I tell people all the time, when they come to Mount Vernon, when I say everybody's doing it, most everybody's doing it. So we have a lot of kids that will come and join choir or band when they get here. Seventh and eighth grade. So now between seventh and eighth grade, there's roughly two hundred kids. So we have seventy-five seventh and eighth grade girls in choir, forty-three seventh and eighth grade boys in choir. So again, we're over half. And, you know, they do a phenomenal job. You know, boys come here to the high school, girls stay there, they sing together, they sing separately. Kids ask me every day, hey, where are we at? And I'm like, I don't, you know, but the music department communicates that eventually. They get to where they need to be. They do an amazing job, but, you know, sixth through eighth grade, we have over half of our student body in choir. So that's pretty impressive.
Are boys always in bass and choir?
Most of the time, it's pretty much split, boys and girls, but that's why they went to bass and trumpet choir, so they can move kids around based on voices.
Other voices, too.
Okay, so bands. Band again is pretty much the same. We go down a little bit in eighth grade, but sometimes when they get to eighth grade, they've kind of figured, hey, I'm gonna do this one in high school or not. You know, I, I might wanna do another elective, things like that. So, but we have fifty-two, fifty-eight kids, you know, in sixth and seventh grade. So we have a lot of kids in band and choir. A lot of those kids are, you know, they're the same ones. So again, they're doing two music classes, which is pretty impressive. And we're doing it at very high levels. Next slide, please. Okay, now our middle school sports. So on top of all the music and academic stuff that our students are doing, we have between usually twenty and thirty percent of our students, this is just seventh and eighth graders, of, you know, that are eligible, are out for sports. And we have some that are, you know, like the cross-country, track, those are combined seventh and eighth grade numbers. The wrestling is combined seventh and eighth grade for boys and girls wrestling. Football's split out, volleyball's divided out, basketball is. But we have, you know, twenty to thirty percent of our students out for athletics as well. We will travel to other schools, and, you know, there's years we've been, you know, have lower numbers, but most of the time, we're going to another school. And besides Clear Creek, you know, we usually have just as many, if not more, kids and are willing to play A, B, C, D games so our kids can, you know, get playing time. But yeah, Clear Creek is usually about the only other Walmart school that has more kids than we do, but we're twice our size.
Remind me, soccer is currently affiliated, but it's not official?
Yep.
Middle school, is that right?
It's a club. So we had about twenty to thirty kids in soccer club last year. And that's sixth through eighth grade. They allowed a few sixth graders to play. Not an affiliated middle school sport yet, but might be coming down the road.
That date likely is coming, but right now, for the level of competition for our kids, right, right now, it's better to be a club than it is an interscholastic sport, but I think that probably will change in the next two to three years. Where more schools are turning to more of an interscholastic approach. Until then, it's just as advantageous from a competitive perspective to be a club. It's a, it's a yearly conversation.
Now, a lot of our clubs are, well, first off, I have two rules, two simple rules for anybody that wants to start a club at the middle school. It has to be school appropriate, and they have to have a staff sponsor. Okay, those are the only two rules. So we've had clubs anywhere from, we had a taekwondo club about ten years ago. We've had a knitting club, we've had guitar club, Pokemon, I mean, you name it, we've probably had a club. Some of them last for two weeks, some of them last for a couple of years, some last a month. It's, you know, student-driven, and, you know, sometimes it's staff-driven too, if they wanna start one on their own. But, you know, we always offer that. It's pretty easy to find a staff sponsor for your club or organization if you wanna do it. The twelve that I have up here are kind of ones that have been going really strong for quite a few years in school. Most of these are all volunteers. So these are staff members or teachers that aren't getting paid to do this, but they're volunteering their time. There's a couple that are paid. Our success lab coordinator, Science Olympiad, and yearbook are paid positions. I mean, you're not gonna become rich doing those, but they are paid. But everything else is extra time from our staff members and our students to offer that club for, for kids to be involved in. And, you know, we have anywhere between ten to probably, you know, sixty kids. Archery's always been a real big one. Those archery numbers are what I would assume would just be the middle school archery team. You have to add in a whole mess of fourth graders and then some high schoolers as well to archery. Because I think our archery numbers go up to about a hundred kids on the team.
What's, what makes some paid and not some unpaid? What's your division or?
We have negotiated to want the paid ones into our extra duty contracts, and those have been ones that are more, I'd say, extracurricular, co-curricular activities than just a, a Pokemon club or a taekwondo club kind of thing.
They're also year bomb.
Year bomb, yeah.
I know I'm gonna know what students tell me, but remind me what FCA is?
Fellowship of Christian Athletes.
Okay.
Questions over any of that? Because the last slide is right here. So I'm almost done. So we have, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent of our eligible students in our sports or activities, you know, after school. We have forty to fifty percent of our students, you know, that are eligible to participate in our fine arts programs. I have over forty percent of my staff that either coaches, runs a club, or supports an extracurricular activity. So the middle school is a very busy place. We send a lot of great kids to the high school where they have just the same amount of numbers and people involved. And the title of the slide, Good Busy. A couple of years ago, we had a meeting talking about how busy kids in Mount Vernon are. And there was a lot of different, you know, conversations going on. The one that I remember the most is a parent stood up and said, our kids are really busy. I agree with everything that's been said, but they're good busy. They are in quality activities supervised by quality people, and I'm okay with that, is what the parent that stood up and said that at the meeting. And I agree with, we have quality activities, we have quality students, quality people that are supervising and sponsoring those. So, you know, we have a lot going on in the middle school. We have really good kids and teachers that are very busy individuals. Then you add on top of that all the sports that Dr. Big Course is talking about. So we excel in academics, arts, athletics. So we excel in academics, arts and athletics.
Well done.
It's not a lot of stuff, you know, all the research tells you the kids involved in activities do better at everything.
And that's, that's what drives this number right here. Forty percent of our staff is involved. They know that as well, so they're willing to give up the time.
Are you noticing Bob, any trends over the last few years that either academically or in sports or fine arts that numbers going up and one down another, or they all just flat?
We, uh, for our numbers in sports, we're holding very steady. Girls' sports have kind of taken, you know, depending on, like basketball's gone down a little bit. But we're holding pretty steady on all of our sports, but they're middle school kids. They wanna do things, uh, just because their friends are and, you know, something to try. And our coaches really, really encourage that. I mean, they recruit for wrestling, basketball, volleyball, they're all out there hitting the streets, getting kids to do it just because it's good to have them be busy. So our numbers stay pretty consistent. But did, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
We're pretty consistent and finding a little bit.
If things are going bad, it's something we as a district need to think about that, well, we can't accommodate everybody with what we have now, we need to think about something different. That's only why I asked.
I thought having a soccer program with that many kids is going to hurt our track program. I was wrong. I mean, they found more kids to go out for track, kids love soccer as well, so we had more kids involved with having the two activities than we did just the one, so.
I think everyone in the audience probably knows too, that one of the good things about how the schedules are run through our conference and everything with sports is that a boy or a girl can do both basketball and wrestling. Instead of having to choose, which is nice, cause I was watching a game a couple of years ago, it was, it was actually Latifan Wood, now a junior.
Yep.
Um, you know, Ethan's three inches taller than me and seven pounds heavier. Um, and he was towering over everybody in the basketball game and scoring a ton of points and the official, one of the officials of the game was talking to him, kind of, and that kid's really good and I just laughed, said, yeah, he's a wrestler. He was a varsity wrestler and he just looked at me like, you gotta kidding me? So it's great that they have that opportunity to do both and really find their niche and.
And that, that is a really, you know, great thing about the schedule in the Walmart. And our coaches really, you know, hype that up to their athletes as well. You can, you know, well, I'm gonna be a basketball player, but you can still wrestle. So come in, work out, wrestle. Of those thirty to thirty-five wrestlers that we usually have, we usually have about, I'd say anywhere from five to ten kids that say, hey, I don't wanna wrestle in the first meet, I just wanna work out, be a part of the team. Then they watch that first meet and then by the next meet, they're like, a couple of them are like, hey, I'm gonna wrestle. And then usually by the third meet, every kid that's in the room is wrestling competitively. And that's, you know, a lot of it's our coaches, but the kids just need that chance to, you know, see, hey, you know, they do kind of rank us and things like that, so it'll work out. And they don't have to be the best wrestler in the world to go out there and wrestle. So they, they just do a great job. And I probably forgot to mention some club or some activity, you know, along the way, but we have a lot going on. And they, you know, our teachers and staff and students, parents really do do a great job. It's a great place to, you know, be the principal of, they make my job pretty easy.
Do you have enough space for all your classes and everything, given the numbers and are you still good there?
Currently, we're, they're doing okay, I mean, we could always take spa, spaces like storage, classrooms are like storage, we know it's had more. But currently, we're doing okay, but we have given a lot of big classes to the high school. A couple of years ago, you know, we added those classrooms, we needed them. We've got some bigger classes coming in, we're kind of, four fourteen is the smallest we've ever been since I've been here. And a lot of that is because we handed off so many kids.
Yeah, so what's the number of the high school now?
Four seventy?
Four seventy, yeah, so the bubble right now is high.
And that sixth grade group, you know, they were eighty-three when they came to us, but you know, they've grown in years to mid-ninety-seven it was, so.
Well, thank you so very much, Bob. Next on the agenda, uh, open discussion of the next step in the superintendent's search and his great associates. And I'd like to welcome Tramalie Sports Off and Kathy Shawna Felger and, um, Tom.
Well, thank you guys. I apologize, we can't communicate well. My son Brock was struck for, for a grace, I'm hot and I'm out, I'm contagious, but just. I did bring Kathy though, so you don't have to carry me straight. Uh, I will be chiming in and of course, if there's questions or concerns, I'm here, but I'm gonna plug Kathy while they're talking. These are six.
For those behind me, I apologize that you're behind me. Put it up on the screen and you can see what we're talking about as we go on. Aww. Okay, this is just our pretty cover page. And then the next page will be, um, just little pictures of Molly and I as the team. Um, so the agenda lists the items that we're gonna kind of talk about tonight. Um, in a perfect world, uh, we will walk out of here with, um, decisions made for most of them. We have a little bit of flexibility with some of them, um, but in order to get the process going, we really need to kind of get some decisions made. So the first thing we're gonna talk about on the next slide is, um, who our contact people are. And this is for our purposes. So we assume, assume that the net is gonna be the board contact person, is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay. So we also need an in-house, um, person to help us with, um, scheduling, um, especially with regard to the stateholder meetings, that's gonna be a big piece of the puzzle.
Okay, we, um, how would you feel about Michael?
Well, how would Michael feel? All right, yeah, what's your last name, Michael?
So, I, I don't disagree with the net being the contact at this time.
I feel.
Until November, that's not really for real.
We talked about, yeah, when we get to that stage.
Yeah, your new board board seats, right. December, so she can.
You get an extra TV.
She can get us most of the way, I think, so we, we talked about it, we thought that it was okay.
And also just to reassure everybody too, that when we send out materials, when we send like, for example, after this meeting, when we send the, the final list timeline and all the final, it will go to everybody, it's not just to one person, everybody can see it. This is just it. The sky starts falling, we have to call in that to apply on Thursday.
I'm good.
Yeah, and Michael has access to Amy Weber, my secretary, and they'll end up coordinating a lot together, so if you want to have any, I mean, to, that would be helpful.
Okay, so the next slide is for candidate travel reimbursement. This is just kind of to plant the seed. We don't necessarily need a decision now because that's a ways down in the future. Um, but something to think about is, um, will travel be reimbursed for first round interviews? And we'll kind of talk about that in the timeline. In that a lot of districts, um, even post-COVID, are still doing virtual first round interviews because it's a cost-saving method. Uh, now that being said, you could have six candidates if you wanna interview. Four of them might be from Iowa, two of them might be from Missouri. Um, but we, our recommendation is that they all be treated equally. So if one comes in person, they all do. If one is virtual, they all aren't. So that's just something to think about for the first round, we'll kind of touch on that when we get to the timeline. And then the same thing for the second round, and the second round is what we call with the finalists. Um, most districts reimburse candidates for that. Um, and something to think about is spouses, partners, significant others. Um, will you be, um, allowing them to come along to take a look at the district? Will be there, there'll be some kind of participation, that kind of thing. So that's just something to think about. Um, I would assume that, um, when Dr. Batt Morris was hired, I did the work research at that time, that there was forums and that kind of thing. And some districts will pay for the candidate only and not the partner, spouse, whatever. Um, but then those candidates are more than welcome to pay for the partner out of their own pocket. So that's just something to think about.
Does it ever happen where it goes to more than two rounds or in your experience?
I, I know, no.
No, typically you wanna stick to the two, you may lose somebody if they, it's not too far. She's been here, there's about a week to two weeks in between the interviews, you don't wanna spread it out over and over. It's kind of like that. And then just to piggyback on what Kathy did mention about the spouse, we strongly encourage, if you get down to the top two, especially the top two, top three, invite the spouse, engage the spouse, it really sends a welcoming message of opening the doors and opening the gates to these people coming in, potentially relocating.
Just here, has anyone do that with, very, when you use research spouse offers? I was curious.
And she was teaching there, wasn't she?
She was up to her ears in research.
Okay, so she wasn't able to, she wasn't able to come, okay. It was up to, it was offered, that's all.
Research, research papers even.
I mean, I, when you want those decisions made, when you want those decisions made?
If we have a collective tonight, just saying, yes, we're on to work with that, and then we'll get down to who those, you know, where those people are coming from. That would be, nothing has to be decided right this minute, it's more than right this minute.
Would you like me to give a feel for what people are thinking right now? Okay, and so, um, will travel be reimbursed for first round interviews or do you prefer those to be online?
Do you all like it?
Yeah.
I agree, they should all be the same, you know, if somebody's two miles away, it's not fair.
Yes.
Do we have to be in person?
I gotta, I gotta jump in here, I, I was going to be with you guys before and tell you that you need to put a shoe in my mouth, really, I shouldn't be, I should be speaking with spoken to. My first round, both rounds were in person.
Yeah, we were over the.
You saw, you saw, you still do the videos, right? You saw a video of the candidates.
Prior.
The first round interview was at the sleep in conference room.
Yep.
What principles in that?
Out of a bizarre situation, we have one candidate who was unable to be here because of travel issues. And so that candidate didn't zoom or whatever it was.
Probably, yeah.
Well, it was a, their plane was canceled or they were, no, they didn't enter, something crazy, but yeah.
So my opinion is, is this is one of the most important things we're doing, is more, there's no reason to cheat on anything. If, if we have one person from Missouri and four from Iowa and we have an opportunity to meet all of them, it can't be that expensive for a hotel and airfare to where it would, to me, it's, it is, it's the pennies that we don't need to worry about. I mean, you know, it can't cost us that much for flying in five people to, to meet them face to face. I mean, unless they're all Chinese.
And I would say, I have a tough time with the idea of zooming.
It's hard.
I just don't think, get the personality, you know, I mean, I think you just wifi like you can see things going on. I mean, I know you can see a little through Zoom, but it's not quite the same, in my opinion, but I mean.
And I agree, you have to be penny wise and pound foolish when it's such an important decision. I guess I'm wondering your experiences, I mean, like mine is, it's just as common, how do you get pushed back? Does it, I mean, if it's, if it's looked upon as a negative and you're losing people applying their quality, then we shouldn't do it.
No, because they have to come back. Or does it help them because their schedule allows them to have it and they can keep working?
It allows for more flexibility, certainly, if it's virtual. Um, if this was five years ago, I would say maybe first, first, um, against second round. Um, with COVID, people got very, very comfortable with technology, but we, we all had a crash course and had to zoom. Um, more, I would say probably ninety percent of our searches, the first round of biz was. But again, you know, as you mentioned, if, if you're getting all people from the Midwest and it's, you know, a couple hours drive, a hotel, that's the single way, that's the only way of what people are comfortable with, that's the biggest part.
And we can change our mind, once we know where those candidates are coming from.
I know it varies, but just, um, what is the typical number of first round interviews and second rounds? Is there an average?
For first rounds, four or six. And then for second rounds, two.
So it's not huge, I wouldn't either, but I, I would prefer to your experience, does it help people actually with their head? Cause they don't have to take the vacation day or maybe tell their employer that they're.
If they're interested in the job, they're gonna do what needs to be done. Um, and I understand the in-person, because I've heard board members say the exact same thing. You're on this little screen, this is all you see, you see the body language. There could be technical, technological, you know, technology issues, there could be all those things. Um, it just depends on district finances, cause there are districts out there that don't have the resources and so that's kind of the way to go.
I also just think they're coming here, we give them a taste of our community. And then they may decide that isn't what they want, but with the Zoom, I don't think they know.
Right.
They know what they've read, they know what they hear, but I, you know, I just think, we have a lot to offer, we have a lot to show off. Especially when you start looking at things we've done in the last few years. I just, I just really like to think that they would want to.
I'm worried for those first year, first, um, interview, do you want it to go to be at night or during the?
That is something that will work out, we're gonna talk about dates as we get to the timeline so that we can get them on everybody's calendars. It depends on your work schedule, um, you know, if you have six candidates, do you wanna do all six in a day? When you say about forty-five minutes for first round interviews, that's a long day. Um, so we probably will encourage two days, but two consecutive days is the way I like to recommend it. So if you have too much of a break between the first three and the second three, you're gonna forget what the first three look like.
Well, I mean, if you do all six in a day, the person who's six has a disadvantage.
Correct, yes.
If I remember right, we did two evenings.
We did.
Thank you. And so we had a few one night and a few the next night and, and we were exhausted.
Get ready to be exhausted.
Um, just funny what they do.
No, they won't.
So in con, in context, I can only say our comments, you paid for our travel expenses for both rounds. You saw the video as the first, as you reviewed all of the applicants with, you know, twenties-ish or whatever. You saw videos of all the ones you wanted to see. There's an in-person interview, mine was at six o'clock at night. Um, and I'm like, really, full-heartedly, you know, get the proof of it to your, see if it can be, you know, go on to have buyers remorse to somebody you think is good and all of a sudden comes in and sounds like it's, I mean, I, I check, I wa, I've rode every inch of this town. I go see the, I go by the city, I, I had to say, you know, can we, can we go to, it doesn't feel like the place to be. As someone who has missed on a few hires using online videos for this community. Now I would try.
You're just fine.
You're not gonna, it's okay.
Why is it a decision?
No, I, 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 I would just kind of use Michael as an example. If, I think that first round, when you're hiring his position, his position, there were some candidates that need to tell, and I think some of the candidates also very pragmatic, decided it wasn't a position for them. So there was a beating out process there, but again, go back to, this is important, you shouldn't be otherwise pushed. I'm, I'm either, I'm somebody who's strong in the process and that makes me, I especially think, great. Somebody from outside of the state could be really hard just to say, this is something I like. I guess they're from Cedar Rapids or wherever they're gonna go. But, uh, I, I don't know how many outside of state candidates will get, you can't say, but how often that happens, but, um, I would need to have somebody to say, I'm not so sure and I'm not gonna then go through, I don't want that to happen very much, but I'm gonna go to the local.
So you're fine with.
I'm fine.
You're fine with.
Either way.
Are you, right?
Fine, that's really great.
Share your findings in person and we all have our findings in person. And that's what I'm with me too, so it sounds like we have a consensus on that.
But what if we have one who says they want to zoom? You say they all should be the same, what if one says, I can't?
But if that's their joy.
That's okay, that's a option. Yep, that's what I'm saying. Everybody else is in person.
They come back.
Great. Yep, that's a good number. Um, so then with travel for the second round, obviously those candidates will be here in person. We discussed spouses, partners, significant others. Um, so we can talk about that once perhaps we know where they're coming from, as to whether you wanna pay for that for the second. Um, so we can talk about that, once perhaps we know where they're coming from, as to whether you want to pay for that, for the second person to come, obviously kids and that kind of thing, that's on them. Um, and then the travel items to think about, um, of airfare, meals, hotel, rental car, mileage, just the standard kinds of things that you would have, and again, it all depends on where they're coming from.
And do you all have, I know you did less, is there a industry for PM, a lot for you guys have to travel?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Do you have, okay.
Okay. So the next pretty slide just kind of talks about the timeline in general form, so we're going to, first stage is to meet with you, which we're doing tonight, to go through the timeline, to figure out the dates. The second stage, and we'll go into this in depth in just a second, um, the second stage, um, involves the stakeholder participation, which is the big piece of the pie. To get that all figured out, it's the most important part of the process, to get the feedback. Stage three is when we would recruit our recruitment. Um, stage four is the deadline for the application, and then the screening and vetting process that we do on our end. Um, and then getting that candidate information to you. And then stage five, um, consists of the interviews and the process involved for that, and then announcement of the actual selected candidate. So on the next page, we talk about stage one, so the date highlighted up above is the date that we are here, which is tonight. So we have, and the next three spots are just internally for us, um, so we have, as you might remember from last time, there was a promotional flyer that was put together. Um, some districts still elect to do the flyers, and some districts want to put together, um, just a little video that we would put in the information that we send out, and then put on our website as well. So, that's something to consider, um, so I guess the topic is, do you have somebody in districts that would put that together? Do you want a flyer and or a video?
Well, we talked about that, um, Molly still had the template for a flyer before.
Okay.
And then we can plug our information into that, so I don't think there's a way of preventing that.
Yep, I like that. Okay.
I did, I did speak with Amy, she and I discussed, she sent you pictures, you did the flyer. She's pretty overwhelmed with other things right now, and will be gone all of the next year. I think that's where, I just, my show on I V, I think we're in.
Michael noticed if there's a motion off, he'll run that or something.
He has a rapid in two thousand fourteen.
No.
Well, we can do two, which I can, I can, it doesn't tend to, like, video, I don't, video. And I would encourage, I think the more communication, the more interactive meeting, and then the candidates, it's always nice.
Can, can you repeat real quickly for the sake of the audience, what you just said? Because the rain, the rain is not.
So we have a flyer that we used last time, so we're just going to work with that and tweak any pictures, new information dates, that kind of thing. And then Molly's suggesting also a video, a link to a video, um, which would be sent out to candidates and put on our website, and so it's kind of, it's not interactive, but it's moving. So you're not just looking at a stagnant piece of paper, it'll be something that's very gritty and.
And then when you're students, okay.
We can incorporate different bits and pieces, and what's great is we'll be going to conventions and buff booths, and there's going to be a queue where somebody can scan it, and just, and watch it right there. So it's just an extra piece. I would go in.
What would you want to put in the?
So, correct.
And just a suggestion, um, having to go to other school websites for information, I think ours is better than other. Might want to put a link on there, too, like if you have.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there'll be a link on the flyer for sure, in the district website, yep. Believe me, we see all kinds of websites. Um, so we just have the October sixteenth date down for our internal purposes, um, to get those things done, and to notify our associates and that kind of thing. So, on the last line on that page, it talks about stakeholder input meetings. So we are going to flip the page. Um, part of our process is the thirty-one quality survey, which you may or may not remember from last time. So we have that survey, in theory, going live on October eighteenth. So what that means is, we put the survey together on our website, there's a separate one for board members, and then there's a separate one for what we call the community. Um, people that take the community surveys select which group they identify with, parents, students, teachers, administrators, um, support staff, non-parent community members. They just pick which one, and then they have to select their top ten qualities out of the thirty-one that are given, and they do have an opportunity to provide comments, and most people usually do. Um, so we have that going live, which means we would give the links to the district to put on their page, get out in whatever way you normally communicate with people in your district, um, so that people are made aware of it. Now, we automatically do English, obviously, is there any foreign languages that you would like, or feel that you need? No?
Okay. Jump in, quick, um, the dates that are yellow, are those the dates that we would want more person to pay special attention to? Either that the AM meetings or on the collectively?
All right, we, at least gave other foreign language potential, I do think they're beautiful and creative, and maybe Spanish or others, I don't know it that well, but I just, I don't want to just say no.
Yeah, I was just asking Jeremy, right, does any of our district communication ever go out, translate or follow any questions?
Um, our website is completely translatable, and we've done different languages, that's standard requirement now for my babies.
What is?
Do we know how long they're red in another language?
We have E L S.
We have a small.
I do it small, I do it small, but just to each thing, believe anybody out, at least putting it.
We got a small amount of Hispanic families and a few Asian families that access E L S services.
We should probably set the survey up.
Yeah, that's not a comment for the, the kids to speak, equally.
Right.
And the whole language, but people homegrown, so, it, it can.
So what language is it?
Spanish or one?
Yeah.
Problem, we can't do, I mean, we've got, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, we've got about two, one.
And I will say, that the most common foreign language survey that is, um, is Spanish, varies due to foreign language surveys.
Sure. That may.
How bad it matters.
Korea is that.
Uh-huh, it is. Greg, I'm not sure.
That's why I'm sorry.
That's the same thing, but I, right now, I'm not, I'm not looking at what the father is.
Yes.
So I think that if they were to take this survey, she'd be fine, and he'd be excellent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you can, you can just email that information to us. Yep. So, um, we might have the survey, then in theory, going live on the eighteen, oh, I'm sorry.
What I did jump in, everybody, the dates that are yellow, those are the dates that we do work, you know, the moment, or at least, you know, so dates that we, can, so that's, so that's, you know, those are dates, you can make sure on your calendar, you can be able to join this group, and get a description of the appropriate one.
That's okay, see?
Those, you, you need to.
So, so let's back up a little bit, so the first date in yellow, or first topic in yellow, is October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, uh, meetings with constituents and stakeholder groups. So, those are two dates that Molly picked, the Monday and a Tuesday. Um, I don't know if those dates, if there's conflicts in the district, we don't believe that there was, from looking at the district candidates, I think I'm looking at today.
So there's a school group and advisory committee meeting on the twenty-third, from six to seven thirty. However, I don't, not that many community people show, I mean, there is the, there is the committee of about eighteen of us, that's largely the school district, there are a few, there's like, three, four, like, community members. I wouldn't use that as a cancelling out of, even if you put it at seven, and somebody could attend the first hour, so I can go to that. On the twenty-fourth, likely we're playing a regional volleyball final game, as you understand.
This could be done during the day.
Yeah, or, or it could be, you know, the volleyball game on the twenty-fourth would be at seven, how long do these meetings typically take?
Typically, most of them will be drawn today.
About forty-five minutes.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about the, the actual, yeah, you have numerous.
Yep, so they can be during the day, they can be, um, virtual, if there's groups that you want to have virtual, we can do it that way as well, or what I call a high ground, which is some in-person and some virtual. Um, the big thing is just to make sure that the dates work, that there's no big conflicts in the district, and then we can, um, work on the schedule.
So I'm confused, you said the yellow dates, we need to, I don't.
Not the twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Okay.
No, so, if you're aware of the community, you can participate.
Okay.
So yeah, if you run through the day, I don't see anything on your calendar.
All of us.
Well, if you're meeting with constituents and stakeholder groups, maybe not be available.
Correct, that's why we suggest it be just.
Here's the schedule up here for you, and these are just some examples of what is done just fast, where we can have some in the morning, some at evening, what we would recommend doing is having a forum, an open forum for the community in the morning, in the evening, those days, so if somebody can make one, then throughout the day, we would present those, and typically, I will tell you, kids love having a work very much, or they have work done in the forum. Typically, it's an initiative government, kids, student council, um, high school, typically, some middle schools, all weekend, now sometimes in high schools as well. But you can have support stuff broken up every day, but we would recommend having those forums over the morning, being full today, so sometimes they can work.
And teachers sometimes, uh, like it obviously at the end of their day, and sometimes they can force a virtual option, because then they can be on their company couch at home after being here all day. So that's the important part of the puzzle, is coming up with the schedule and the groups. Um, I believe, I looked today, and we have, um, I think the schedule that we did, that we used last time, so that's kind of the starting point, groups might be same. Um, so it's just a matter of plugging in the times, and that kind of thing. So, are you in agreement with the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, as far as dates goes, again, do not participate?
No.
Principals, do you see anything, how about, I'll say, during the day?
I'm looking right now, I don't see anything.
How fast are you testing, when I, when I, when I come, this is later, it'll be. It's probably as good a date as any, overall, I think, the target date for completion, if you, if you work backwards, was spot on, what I thought it should be. Kind of that late January or February, I think that allows the district to stay ahead of a lot of places, and is a real risk for time for you, and I guess, as you said last time, gives you two holiday breaks for potential candidates to continue the process.
Yep.
And it gives our new board time to be seated, and have a little bit of time to get their data.
Yep.
Yep.
So we will need to get that schedule put together, um, probably, twenty-fourth, twenty-eleventh, that's what I thought, yeah. So next week, because you're gonna want to get word out to people, and you're gonna want to post it, however you do it for your staff, and all your interior people or internal people, and then external as well.
Just, just do you limit people, or is it anybody who wants to come, they come?
So for the forums, it's open, the morning meeting forums, it's anybody who wants to come. For the focus groups of the day, typically, we would say anywhere, and I'd say we were ten to twenty people, so, ten to twenty kids, ten to twenty, their teacher requires any picks, ten to twenty supports, and a lot of times they will pick for a reason, there's a, and that's a terrible waste of luck, but if there's a need for their groups, you can.
It's easier in-person, obviously, to have a bigger group than it is virtual, because that gets difficult.
Is the board okay with me putting that, because we can save the date, um, school messenger message out to the community, to say, right now, we anticipate on October twenty-third, twenty-fourth, will be the opportunities for community members, staff members, and that, kids, students to be involved in the, uh, feedback process for the selection of super candidates. Details.
The better, sooner the better.
Yeah, that's, that's good, you said, we don't have to be there the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, but we're welcome to be, right?
I, actually, I encourage you not to.
Encourage us not to, okay.
And I know that sounds terrible, um, but we want the scholarship community to feel comfortable going in here, because we're gonna ask them about the good, the bad, things they like, things they need improvement. We want them to feel comfortable, just speak freely, um, so we can't tell you not to come, we can't bar you, I won't kick you out, right, so I will encourage you, just take a break, you know, go all right, lots of wine, or, you know.
We'll have lots of opportunity for our, but, uh, yeah.
We're reflecting that back, you was, you were, the candidates maybe didn't come, we just, they're hearing things that way, I think that's, would be, that's, I want to make sure they know that, that's a really good.
I won't kick anybody out.
So, we then also have a November third date, and that's just an internal date for us to close the survey, the thirty-one quality survey that we talked about. We like to leave it open a few days after the stakeholder meetings, just to kind of remind people during that time, and hey, don't forget about the survey if you haven't done it. Um, and then we have the November third date for the flyer draft and video draft to be done as well. Now, the next date Molly selected in yellow is November eighth, that is a meeting date with the board to go through the survey information. Uh, the results of the survey, the breakdown by groups, um, to look at the flyer, video, to get approval on all of those things. So that is, um, a meeting with you, it can be done virtually, if you want us virtual instead of in-person, I mean, obviously, we're right down the road, but I feel like today, I mean, come on. Um, so does November eighth work for you as a group, and if so, what time?
So, November eighth is the day after the election, so should we invite whoever has won, and that election will be part of that meeting?
Absolutely.
And I know, I'm gonna be out of town, so I would need.
And let's agree about this meeting, too, it's in your shorts, it's all data, it's all the members, it's all data, so we'll even send it ahead of time for folks to kind of absorb. I would encourage you to, anybody that's coming onto the board, I would encourage, because it's a good one, really, it's a black and white data, it's a good opportunity, but if somebody has questions on the process, it's a good time to have those questions, um, so what, if you just want to your question, invite anyone who's willing to be seated, um, and just go like them. And then as far as being virtual, um, it's all data, which I'll send it ahead of time for you during the first round.
So would the board like that to be virtual or in-person, with people doing, and that wanted to probably do it?
I prefer in-person.
And then you can plan this.
Yeah.
And is this room okay with everyone?
If it's available.
Should be available.
Is that what they?
Yeah.
Okay, so alternatively planned, it would be here, six-thirty, okay? Okay, so six-thirty here, unless it's not there.
Should be, because it's on. The one thing I'll ask, Greg, is there other rooms that are set up for soon, except up like the, I don't care either way, but we bring the out here.
Okay, perfect, we have November eighth in person, minus one, um, for six-thirty. Um, and then also on that, it indicates, um, approval of the application form, I'm gonna get to that in a little bit, um, we have a link to the app, the draft application. So if we flip the page to page nine, or finishing stage three, so in theory, if everything goes well on the meeting the night before, November eighth, then we will have the application go live on November ninth. We will make any fine tunes to either the video, um, or the flyer, and have that go live on November ninth. It will go live on our website, and members or candidates in our database will also find out about it, and it will also, um, advertising will also get posted, and we'll discuss advertising in just a couple minutes. Um, and then. Um, and then, uh, we have an application deadline of January twenty-fifth. So as Greg indicated, January fifth, sorry. As Greg indicated, it'll be open, but over both holidays, which is a real plus. And I've drafted some other ones for other districts and other states the same way, because then people, they're home with their families and they talk about it and all that kind of stuff. So that's an internal date for us, so we have January fifth for that date. On the next page, this is a biggie, so this date we need to pay attention to, this is stage four. We have January seventeenth of twenty-twenty-four as a meeting date. On that date, we will discuss the candidates in detail. Those candidates that we have screened, embedded, and who have completed the video. You will get that information in advance of that meeting, so you can look through the applications, you can watch their pretty little videos and that kind of thing. That meeting will be a long meeting, I would say at least three hours. So, we need to determine if that January seventeenth date works for you as a group.
We can.
Okay.
Because several of us will no longer be on the board.
Okay.
You'll have to, you'll have to set that date, um.
On November. Is it possible, because the only reason why I'm asking is when we open up recruitment, people are gonna wanna know this. As much as I'd like to tell you that the candidates are fine, not, rather, they're only fine for not hardly, but it's not true. So we have to give them an idea of when they know if they're really more than that. So can we say mid-January? Or you could, well, say.
Yeah, I just don't think you wanna say a specific date.
That's fine, I just have to go and tell them, so that they know themselves.
Because we do wanna move it along, we're not trying to push it back.
Hopefully, just gonna be transparent with the candidates.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be one, but back on, like, that meeting.
November eighth, yeah.
Which one is the date?
Yeah, because you'll know who they are and if, if they're here, we can get consensus. Yeah, and for some reason we don't know, because it's too close up in elections, we can confirm with the two that are. Okay.
And that brings us to our next question, we're talking about the next, how like, we have a week of November twenty-two for candidate meetings. We haven't listened, uh, because we can't, we don't know this. This is what we talked about, where it'd be a couple days. Are you comfortable with us still telling candidates this week?
Yes. Okay.
We can always file as which days.
Wizards coming.
I know, right?
And then that would also basically means your second one, kind of view is where we would get some week of neutral for that second one, and those would be your top two or top three candidates.
And they're back-to-back weeks, so that there's no gap, like Molly had mentioned earlier, so that the candidates don't have an opportunity to take another job.
Because as much as I love this, it's only true when it isn't for us. These will be for the people of quality design, so we are, once we get on the, on the roller coaster, we're on it. Spare warning to everybody.
Okay, so the next page is just kind of an overview of how we build the profile, and that's just the thirty-one qualities meeting and the stakeholder involvement and the theme for those stakeholder, uh, meetings, that kind of thing. So again, there will be a board survey, and there will be a, a community survey, and this is kind of what it looks like in a nutshell.
This is just the ten of it.
Yeah. Yeah, so again, they select which group, there's the thirty-one qualities, um, and the board will have board member names. Um, so then they are forced to pick ten, you can't pick nine, you can't pick eleven, and then they can, uh, provide comments at the end. So, um, the next couple pages are ones that Molly had showed you earlier, sample stakeholder schedules, so we will work and get that all put together. Um, the next page, page seventeen, is the promotional video materials that Molly was discussing earlier.
This is that list, you know, about what would be incorporated in that video. This is the, this is the variation of the video.
Yeah, so.
And we built it.
Yep. So just some current pictures of the districts and staff, things that you want us to know, we'll put on there, some bullet points of the town itself, or the community, or the neighboring area. Um, if you'd like to have a breakdown of student enrollment by grade level, that's always nice to have, same with faculty. And talking about, um, student achievement, and there is a link, I think, can you click it on their own board page?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a clickable link.
It's just. You can see the whole looking there.
Yep.
And I like to tell the boards, then we want to contact, but this is the vision of the board, this is your board, I want you to hear all the board, you need to. Including your community, school district, as a community.
Would the board be okay with Matt Tate, who's very good at this, uh, being their contact person on pictures and this list?
Well, I'd say the management team could work on it together, but naturally, the, the video piece, going, that's the.
Right, so he's the assistant high school. And that's like, and the other.
He was just volunteered and he doesn't know it, right?
That's right.
So we give to him.
That's the best way to do it.
Don't understand.
To the whole community on, um, on our links for tonight's meeting.
No, because it doesn't sound. Um, what we can do is, once we're done with tonight, it won't be at tonight, I apologize, but tomorrow, you all will get a copy of this, and it'll be clean, and it'll have the information we collected tonight. And a final copy, and it can be redirected without information, and that can become public.
Okay, I'm thinking about the, the other candidates. Make sure that they have an opportunity to see all of this, because it's important information that won't really affect them.
Once the, I think, once they're elected, then we can.
I just didn't know if they had any of this yet.
No.
Okay, so the next page talks about the online applications, so.
I wonder why I just let you, but.
I didn't try it. Um, so the application is a standard application that we have, that we, there we go.
And it's in a, just for, for sure, it's exactly what it will be.
So, um, that's something to take a look at, and then we'll meet a yay or nay at some point in time, yes, it's good, no, it's not good. There's some districts that change it because by law they can't ask to do that. The other thing, but if it's the same application they used before, then we're probably good to go. Okay, now we're talking about advertising, we're just about done, I promise. All right, so this is Molly's baby.
Yeah, I'll talk to the dog, and if anybody could just raise your hand, I'm gonna do a lot of our products. So these are all free, these are just the ones in state that I recommend. You know, we always wanna, you always wanna hit people that are, or mother of adults, so this is a great exchange of yourself, so I would recommend. There's no charge to the district. Um, I would ask, because we're not members, we can, it would, they would charge us, because some people may not want to use districts that we're on, as far as advertising. Then we get into the ones that have these on, the ones that I've highlighted are the ones that are active meetings. That is my recommendation from what I'm seeing of when we do this. If somebody on the board, or your community says, hey, I know, you know, National Association of School Superintendents, I'm familiar with that, I really think it's a great avenue. We can certainly invest it. Um, but right now, what I'm recommending is AAS, which is a national application, is kind of the holy grail for superintendents across the country. Um, they do have a national conference coming up as well. Um, I would recommend the job flash package. The reason why I love this, it's only five hundred ninety dollars, so it's not that much more than what you'd be paying for a thirty-day. And it's less than what you'd be paying for a sixty-day, which is what our recruitment period is looking for. Um, what they do is they email out to five thou, over five thousand citizens. Um, it's huge, that even if it's somebody that's not looking for a job, it generates that word of mouth. It is a huge, if there's anything that you are going to pay for, this is the one that I'm really stressed on. This is the one that I feel very passionate about doing, so. Um, the next one that I'm recommending, um, is included in your base speed, so there's no fee for this one. Um, it's education week, it's four ninety-five, but again, it's included in your base speed, that's another publication, it's an online, hand-printed. Um, because you have a sixty-year recruitment, we could do it for sixty days, um, they would charge you that four ninety-five dollars. But what I'm suggesting is that we would stagger these ads, so we would do AAS for the first thirty, then we'd do ED week for the final thirty, that way it's covered from getting ten or not. Um, the next two that I recommend is NACSS and Hollis. Those are your Hispanic readers and very national ones that want to play. Um, I'll be very honest with you, we don't see a huge turnaround with these, but it does give word of mouth, educational diverse. So I would recommend it. There's National, um, NASSS, which is free, can't hard to do, because it's free. Again, our work is, I mean, it's very attractive, especially over the holidays, which you are going to be hearing Thanksgiving, and that was done on purpose. These are some additional options that do have a thing to them. And I mean, they're, the only one that I see good job amount is Holy Shit Two Hundred. It's a hundred and forty-nine dollars, again, it's for a thirty-day posting, so we would stagger it. That's the one that I would really recommend in addition to the others. There's some below that we see, um, including Corin Dollar, which is an affiliate posting today. I just don't see the retro, I'll be very honest with you, I don't think it's, um, same name with, um, they were some shoes, because they're a head. Um, district admin, especially one who is same department, does same ASI, so it just feels too much. Um, so I, those are the ones that I recommend below, but again, if somebody feels very passionate about one of the publications from here, I just didn't want to. Yeah, so how do you need approval of the term? It's under two thousand dollars. And anything that we do, you're gonna receive a badge for, so you'll be able to see.
Is there any superintending, I don't know, is there any sources that you go to that you think are priorities, all of these?
The gold standards are A, NSA, and education, from a superintended consumer perspective. I think it's important to, if I can educate, to be, to educate, and then share your thoughts. For equity purposes, for broadening this search for all quality candidates, so. Yeah, I think one, our outline are, are, are good, um, scroll down, uh, when you had, I mean, uh, school leadership two point oh.
Would you say that by, well, educators would already be looking at the other things though too? I'm just, I'm just curious. Is it an overlap, or are we just?
Yeah, because obviously it's built in, like, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't do the NASSS ones, because they were, they were an organization that was viable for a while, then it disappeared off the face of the earth for two or three years, and now they're back. Um, I'd go off their emails, but AAS is, regardingly, their conference will be shortly after you pick somebody. It's always like around Valentine's Day.
I think, did I understand, Bill, that you're asking though is, would, wouldn't fly? NACSS, and.
Would those people already?
Let's see, no, because there's business arguments.
If not, I just wanna know.
Well, yes and no, but the reason why we push it forward is because they have a conference coming up in the end of, in the, in the November.
Oh, so then it would come out.
And it would be live in the conference, you're gonna have more people attending.
Okay, no, I, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get a feel here, Lance, are you comfortable with the recommended ones? I didn't hear a word.
He's supportive.
He's supportive.
Yeah, I, I support.
That's all.
But it's just, um, I'm fine with that, Bill.
I think that's why we're not.
Okay.
All right, so then the next slide, these are just some odd questions. Um, some of these I think I know, but I wanted to show we have this discussion. Are there any specifics that you follow, or, um, or, and would you refer to anything specific you all, that? I'm not aware of any, unless there's some changes.
How has the reciprocity or lack thereof changed in the last seven years? Because, I mean, the relationship was fairly easy to get, but I also, I had to take, ultimately, I had to take two classes, one laughable, one with evaluation. Like, I could do it by sleeping, although it was elementary head, so.
For this level of a superintending, I know that a lot of people that are gonna be applying are either going to have it, or are gonna be very driven to do it. Um, I guess, and I'm gonna pick on the whole school district, like, it's what it works, it's a good stepping stone for the person that's in that. That was a little bit more, I mean, even sure being firm when we're hired, but for the level of how for it.
And one of the questions on the application forces the candidates to do their homework, because it says, have you checked with the state of Iowa to make sure that you are eligible? Now, sometimes they might have to take a class, and, and sometimes I think boards may give them six months, or whatever the case may be, but we force them to do their job and look.
Are any of those things cost prohibitive?
I don't think so.
Okay, and then the next question, are there any preferred qualities that you all would like to have? You know, sometimes we have boards that say we prefer a doctor, but sometimes it's, you know, for, for a larger school system, there are some, I don't know. Is there any firm characteristics you can think of, and this is not a, a firm sentence, so this is just a conversation piece, are there any qualities you all as a board would like to really look at when it comes to identifying the candidate?
And I'm just asking, you know, the first thing, so have we ever hired anybody that wasn't, didn't have a doctorate in the med? I don't know.
Did Jeff? Did Jeff have a doctorate?
No.
I don't think so.
A didn't, didn't.
No.
Yeah, the last three have had doctors. Correct.
And a similar question, have we ever hired, or would we ever consider hiring somebody who doesn't already have superintendent experience?
We would, yeah.
I technically, I had six years as an assistant superintendent, I wasn't a superintendent.
Gary was associate.
Yeah, he was an associate.
And Dr. Ham wasn't either, Dr. Yu.
The last three have not, had not ever been superintendent. And I, they've been in the central office.
So how do we fill those doctors?
That's one of the questions on the thirty-one qualities as well, um, Molly might kick me, but, um, it narrows your candidate pool. If you are adamant that somebody have a doctorate, PhD, it will narrow your candidate pool.
I'm not adamant, I would just say.
No, 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 yeah, no, no, no.
And I wanna be very clear, this is something we are talking about internally, or screening, or if you all say, hey, we prefer someone with a doctorate. I'm not gonna take somebody out of the pool because they don't have a doctorate, and all your other criteria. This is simply, um, something that if we're talking about your uniform candidate, what would you like that to look like?
That type of thing.
We already have doctors, preferred, and other doctors.
And, and there are districts that say that, yes, doctor preferred, correct. We can discuss that after the survey results, and.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't feel it has to be a requirement by anyone.
I, I don't have reservations, I don't want to.
But this may be.
Looking for.
That's right. I think that's, they're indicated to be an idiot, to pretend it's more important than having a doctorate, partly, I mean.
Those are finer points we can discuss later.
Yeah, can't have it.
If you get one, including his experience as a superintendent, I was just curious.
And then, I think you're in no case for this question, um, but are you willing to offer a contract to someone who needs to obtain license in Iowa? So could somebody from Missouri? And then would need to take a class or two, are you okay?
I think we've already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
I have to ask the question. And then as far as setting the payments, uh, invoices for payment, who should I see?
Wow. You got a lot of Facebook.
Hi, there you are.
Okay, and then next, we're gonna go into salary.
Oh, yeah, in closed session.
We have planned on doing a closed session. So just to let the audience know, then we will go into closed session, um, at the end of the regular agenda to discuss the salary range for the position. Um, there will be voted upon, uh, numbers or anything tonight, but, um, typically those conversations can be a little more open when it's more in closed session, so. We got advice in legal counsel, that was fine, so that's, that's why we'll go to end the closed session later.
So we'll put on, we'll do that.
And that number will appear in the, uh, uh, act, in the posting, so you'll see the number soon enough.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, um, moving on to the approval of contracts.
Series of contract, you see, um, A, B, and C are replacement positions, uh, for people who have left their positions. The next four, um, typically it's, um, October, where we approve again, the Drug Free Coalition Director and Assistant Director, their fiscal year is October one through September thirty. And because they have secured more grants, um, there are two new positions, uh, in the Drug Free Coalition, so that's what F and G are. Remember full well, we are the fiscal agent for the. Remember full well, we are the fiscal agent for the Wellness Coalition of Rhode Island County. This does not cost us anything, but we are just, as a fiscal agent, we must approve the contracts. Uh, H is a replacement position. I said a hundred, um, is back with us as a bus driver, she technically retired in last May, was the plan of coming back on board in October and given the shortage of bus drivers, uh, we welcome her with open arms to return as soon as she could. So that's what Sally's on there for. Uh, Jason Purging is a replacement position, as is Casey for the Assistant Voice Track Coach.
He taking John Spock, who's probably Casey taking up his career.
Isaac.
What?
Isaac.
Isaac.
Oh, yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I will leave. Thank you.
I'll say.
Bill, second, is there any discussion?
I have a question after the vote, not related to the vote, like that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay.
I was just reading this list and then also Bob's presentation. Right, didn't we have, we were in a contract talk about committee getting established to look at the, um, extrudery schedule and structure, is that still planned?
Yeah, they're, they're working on it as we speak.
I also have a question, do Molly and Kathy need to stay here for our conversation later?
Yes.
But there are comfy chairs in the hallway.
That's what, that's what I assumed, but I wanted to be sure.
We should be, the rest should be.
Yeah, the rest, yeah.
Wait, you don't need.
Give them a little break.
They can take a break. I assume we'll take a mini, mini break.
Yeah.
Mini break, okay.
Um, so, uh, Facilities Division, the Heartset Parsons Family Activities Complex update.
Just real quickly, just to let you know where things stand, we will meet again, um, next Monday to review progress on the punch list um, that we completed in mid-September. The major landscaping pieces, the, the planning of bushes and trees and everything takes place starting next week. They were hoping to maybe do a little bit this week with the weather forecast, gotta change that. Uh, so that's, um, that's where things stand, um, with the, uh, with the project and fifteen units. You know, there's still money outstanding for the project, so we've got, uh, motivation for them to get the punch list done in a kind of fashion. A lot of the punch list type of thing, like for example, on the walking trail behind the facility, there are like several segments of the concrete that need to be replaced. We're getting through the football season to do those bigger pieces, but we have to have the true football season and the weather turn down, so.
Question, Greg, we were gonna have the lights be motion, someone had asked me in the neighborhood, there would be motion? And they're not now, is that something that will be covered?
Yes, they, they put in the wrong heads. And that's part of the punch list, they're on order, they should be here, um, they may even already be here. Also, they forgot, uh, the part of the parking lot closest to the entrance, there's supposed to be two, two-way lights, you know, one way. So all those lighting pieces are coming in, so yes, there, there'll be just like the.
A little thing like this monsoon we're having, which we have at all year. If it washes all the seed off the hillsides and stuff like that, will they come in receipt or?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And after, after, the good news is, is the week before things opened, right after the punch list, we had a good downpour on that one Friday. And that pointed out some of the areas that were susceptible to ponding and everything, so that's on the punch list.
Okay, that's what I was just curious.
So it's gonna get rain that day.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the first reading of the five hundred series of policies.
Okay, so as I shared, this is the year that we were to look at the five hundred series, and I gave you, you know, memo of background of the fact that we really started in earnest again to do the yearly review of policy series in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So we, we looked at two hundred series and the three and four hundred, the one hundred and sixty, and this is the year to do the five hundred series. However, we hadn't looked at the five hundred series, um, for several reasons back in two thousand nineteen. So when I started to do my own personal review of those policies before giving it to the policy committee, I noticed that literally every policy has been updated between, in the five hundred series, has been updated between two thousand nineteen and now. Um, and I would guess that in quarterly policy, I'm based from the Iowa Association of School Boards this year, we'll see a few more. But, um, there was no reason to do an in-depth review by the policy committee, uh, when, when literally, I'm looking at it, we have made the most up-to-date changes in these policies, with the exception of a few. I will talk about one area in depth in just a second, but the activity program policy five oh four point six, I just cleaned up some of the language in that. There was some verbiage wasn't grammatically corrected and just wasn't formatted very well, that's the only thing that happened there. We did not have a policy, we did not have a policy on student organizations. Um, I put one together based on, um, examples I had seen from other districts. Um, this policy goes in to delineate what's the difference between a curricular and a non-curricular student. So that, that factors in as important when you think about things like new legislation that does not allow, um, any type of activity or club that promotes, um, study of gender, identity, et cetera, et cetera. So the unique case we have in middle school, the middle school have the gay straight alliance group, but fifth and sixth graders can't be in it. Seventh grade can, so we've had to work around, um, that. And just having a student organization's policy outlines what it means to have a curricular versus a non-curricular, um, club. I don't know why we didn't have this policy before everybody else does, so it's just a matter of adding that and as a new policy for us. Also, the wellness policy, uh, we went through a, um, food service review last year and, um, after meeting with them, discussions were that our wellness policy really needed a thorough update. So the Wellness Committee will meet four times this year, the first time being next Monday, uh, to create a new wellness policy and regulations for the district. That will happen in, um, so we'll bring a wellness policy to the board in the spring. The big one that, uh, I asked you to, to make sure you kind of took a look at, is five oh three point eight, and it is the policy around, um, students who potentially are violent or assaulted in the school environment. And just want to give a little background, I did this for the board in the memo, but, um, this original policy language, when first, uh, introduced by the legislature, was much more punitive and, uh, much more directive than, um, the, the final version. It essentially said that if a student is involved in a, um, major threat or violence toward a student or a staff member, that first offense you have to do this, second offense you have to do this, and third offense you have to do this, and literally third offense was, you were removed from school. Their first version also didn't take into account special education law that protects students with disabilities with regard to disciplinary actions. So they had to go back and rewrite the pieces that had them out of compliance with the federal law of the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. But they also, um, uh, started looking at the language and were receiving feedback from many people that stating that you must do this, you must do this, you must do this, including removal of a student after a third offense was, was too, was too punitive in nature. So eventually the final, um, version of the policy has levels one, two, and three for different age groups. Like there's, here's the actions you should take if it's a pre-K two student, or we recommend you take as a, sorry, PK two student, then it breaks it down into, um, grades three to five, then it's six to eight, nine to twelve. And basically every one of those levels says responses to the behavior may include any of the following. It no longer says will. This is huge for schools because, trust me, in having done this for four years, discipline isn't black and white, it's gray. Every situation is unique, and to say that you're gonna have to follow to the letter a certain guideline regarding students who are, um, assaultive, um, toward others is really tying the hands of the district. Now, make no mistake, we take those things very seriously, we take very serious action. But it gives you the options of, of doing anything from conferences with families to, um, mental health counseling, behavior intervention programs, restitution, detention, suspension, expulsion, all of those are on the table. Temporary removal from class, et cetera. So the final version of the policy came out being one that is much more, um, workable for school districts and honestly, isn't much different than the current policies we already have in place. We updated our existing policies about three or four years ago, we put in a level system, level one, two, three, to say, if this, then here are the options. So if you are in a fight with a fellow student, here are the options for, um, consequences. If you have a second offense for fighting here, or it's, it's, um, uh.
Yeah, that's what I was discussing.
Yes. Still on toward a little bit, so basically, um, every offense leads to a more serious consequence. And again, we've been very clear on the fact that assaultive behavior isn't tolerated. So that policy, literally, what usually happens is legislature passes a law and then the Iowa Association of School Board writes a policy. Ultimately, what Iowa Association of School Boards did this time was, here's the laws passed by the legislature, that's what we recommend for policy language. They didn't change a thing. So basically, this is us adopting the, the law as written from the, um, uh, state legislature this past session. I went through it, we spoke about this at a couple of different superintendent meetings, and, um, some districts put in some minor tweaks in language, but I thought this, A, pretty straightforward, B, something we can support and see very much in line with what we already do. Once this passes first and second reading, we will, we'll disseminate this out to families because if you remember, one of the new laws that was passed for this year is that we have to share student handbooks with all parents. We did that in August, um, but this will be an addendum to the handbook. Then, once the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five handbooks are being written, we'll clean up, kind of making sure that this language is consistent with what's already on our handbook for years coming forward. And this is the first time I'll say, not my problem. But, so it's, it's, um, it's the language as literally verbatim passed by the legislature for that. So I would, um, ask you to, uh, approve the first reading of these policies. If there's any feedback in the discussion session, that's great. Need to make changes or want me to look at anything on any of them, we can do that prior to the second reading in no minute.
Okay, Rick, is one that we approved in policies?
I'll second.
And Jeremy, seconded. Is there any discussion?
I actually do have a question, um, in the definitions in five oh three eight, um, where it talks about out-of-school suspension, it reads almost as though when a student is on an out-of-school suspension, they can still practice on an athletic team, and I thought it even said that it continues to be. Which I would assume would not be accurate.
Yes. Restrictions from school activities means a student will attend school and classes and practice, but will not participate in school activities.
So under, out, under.
That's out of, out of school suspension.
So I, I, uh.
Means a student should move from school, which includes school classes and activities. An out-of-school suspension will not exceed ten consecutive school days unless due process is provided as required by federal state law. Or restriction from school activities means the student will attend school and classes and practice, but will not participate in school activities.
Will attend school when you have an out-of-school suspension?
No, I'd say, yeah.
In practice, yeah.
So I had, did I read it wrong?
No, that, that's really funky, that I read, um, and for the, for the sake of the audience, if a student commits a major infraction, the principal cannot suspend a student for more than ten days. If they want, if they recommend, or the superintendent recommends that a suspension be longer than ten days, then the board must make the decision about out-of-school sus, uh, uh, long-term suspension or expulsion from, from the school. Okay, so let's read this again. Because yes, they would not be involved, I see. I think they're talking about two different things here.
That's kind of what I thought, it was only seemed like it was a different definition.
Exactly, so I'll go back and check that, but yeah, that needs to be, that, that should not be under the heading out-of-school suspension. That would be if the, if the, um, consequence was a restriction from school.
Yeah, that's what I thought, maybe that was a new bullet point that somehow didn't.
Because a lot of times, like, like our good conduct policy, if a student gets caught, you know, uh, stealing a six-pack of beer from Casey's, um, they limit X number of active events, but they still crack. Okay, yeah, I'll check on that, because that's not, that's not.
Would you like to manage your motions?
I mean, you could, yeah, I, I don't, I don't. It's the first read, so.
Yes, we can, yeah. So, any, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Six-pack of coke, I read it three times. I've read it a couple of times, that's why I added up.
Either way.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
It's in Iowa.
Thank you. And then option passed.
Possession.
Okay. Next then, um, no, the, uh, report, I didn't write any reports. Okay, um, Syak, uh, giving his part.
No, I just, uh, I sent a note out to the community today about that and also remind, uh, the committee. Yeah, the, uh, email went out to the community today, writing them to reading if they so choose, um, and, uh, I sent out the save the date for the, um, stakeholders, for the superintendent search law.
Sherry, is there anything you want to pull out of the consent agenda?
I do have some questions about the inter-fund transfer, is that a, a transfer that it will transfer back to the general fund? It's a procedural thing, so there was, uh, extra comments that we need to purchase at, uh, uh, middle school just due to the numbers. Um, and it was approved to purchase the fund, purchase some using general funds, but just the way the code is written, there actually an inter-fund transfer, so it first made from the Student Activity Fund and then the general fund transfers the money to the Student Activity Fund. But reality, it disperses from the general fund, but this is just a more procedural than anything.
Thank you. That, that, well, that was my second question, my phone answered the first one very well earlier today, so I would be completely approve it, consent agenda as a thing.
Okay. And is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, and the motion passed. We now need to take a roll call, vote to go into closed session to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by state or federal laws, and kept confidential, or to be kept confidential as a condition for that governmental body to possession or continue receipt of federal funds. I'll see another second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Actually, all those in favor say aye, one at a time, that's how we do it.
I'm hurt.